And momentarily, I didn't hear it go through, but thinking of this meeting will be recorded. Hey, let's rise for the full data will be done by Council Sally.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We pray that you will be with us today. As we meet, write our thoughts and our decisions so we may have a positive impact on our borough. We thank you, Lord, for the freedom in this great country. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I'd like to lead this to the high of America's American connection for each game. One nation. I mean, this is the little bit of stuff that we're all.
They may be seated, now secretary, you know. Nope, the attendance for purposes of the review.
Uh, town. We have and our town board is on his accent, otherwise everyone else.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Now we move forward to the consent agenda. And now we have officially arrived into one motion, I believe. So now motion please for follow the minutes as well as all of the bills. And that would historically leave you off the board at two and now one motion for all of those things.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes from February fifth, twenty twenty four, regular Borough Council meeting, February twentieth, twenty twenty four work session minutes, and approve the bills for the month of February twenty twenty four and the reoccurring bills for the month of March twenty twenty.
Okay, I'm moved by councilors Charlie and Littlefield for approval of the consent agenda for all minutes and all bills. Month of bills because you're in current bills for the month of March. Are there any questions or necessary amendments first? Okay, hearing that all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are you opposed? All right, that's unanimous statement. Are there any presentations for this evening?
There are.
Uh, okay, then ask my history objective, would you have to come forward?
Sorry, I missed last month. I was under the weather, so um I have a whole week's worth of information here for you. Uh, we've been busy, even though it's non-event season right now, we're definitely in the throes of planning all of our third Friday stuff. I've basically all food trucks booked, ton of vendors already. Um, in fact, it's pushing some of these months, the limits of our footprint, so we might be looking to maybe go up Main Street or down a little bit further. So it's, I'm happy about that. Um, musicians getting booked and everything like that. So it's great. Um, I'm gonna do some more pushes, but we've been doing some great social media. Our marketing team is doing a lot of that, so people are tagging their friends and they're getting the word out. Our Economic Development Committee, uh, we hosted back in January, the ribbon cutting for cinema brewing. Uh, it was a fun night, very well attended. Uh, it was a night of bingo, um trivia too, so a lot of people were there and got to see everything. So that was a nice welcoming into the community. We also had a ribbon cutting on the uh twenty sixth of January at the new Legacy Barber Shop, which is a great place and uh nice guys that that are running that over there. Uh, Love Obsessed and Sauterton Connect are kind of working together too, and this was the brainchild of Love Obsessed, Stacy. But to possibly bring a town business egg hunt here in a couple of weeks, um, I have been putting the feelers out to the businesses first, obviously, before we really start addressing this. A lot of the retail, of course, are excited about something like this. Eggs would be hidden, they would then be given a discount or gift card, and then there'd be a grand prize at the end. Lot of places, though, like the restaurants and things, do not want people running around the restaurant looking for eggs. So we're trying to work on that a little bit, and I should know more by the end of this week. So just keep posted on our socials. If something like that truly is happening, we feel it will bring in some people from out of town and they could stay the one or a half day and go to different places and not just to one store.
Excuse me, is this um an egg hunt that's done inside each of the businesses?
So right, it would be something that would involve, as long as we can get enough, because I feel, you know, it has to be worth coming here, enough businesses that would want to participate. They would be given, someone who's coming would be given a card, they'd go to check in at Love Obsessed, let's say, and given a map of what businesses. And then we're hoping as they walk by, perhaps a restaurant, they'll stop in there to eat. So that's kind of what we're working on right now. So stay tuned for more on that. Um, it's quickly coming up, but I think it'll, it'll be a fun event, especially if the weather's nice. Um, we had on February twenty second, we hosted another successful Business Bites event. We had it in the evening. Again, NF Landis was generous to donate their um showroom space, which is a great space to have this. And from Electric Supply, they were um the, the collaborator with us. They gave us the, recommended the woman who came, Maria Sosa from Innovus Energy. And she gave a great talk about electricity rebates and other energy solutions. And might not sound exciting, but we actually learned a lot about this. And the business owners that came out really were happy with this event. And we're really talking to her afterwards, where I might even go so far as to print up a little bit on this for businesses when I go and talk to them, because this is something we feel a lot of businesses don't understand. Like, if you don't know, you don't know that saying. So we feel that this might be an important thing, not that they have to go with her company, but just to become more energy efficient. So I'm going to kind of develop something with Maria and put that out there when I have meetings with that. It would be great if we became like the most energy efficient town in southeastern Pennsylvania. Um, I'm also having a lot of meetings lately since it's not event season and reaching out to some other larger companies that we haven't quite talked to in the past. I've had some really great talks with JBS. Um, they are really looking to involve their employees with a lot of the community events, and so perhaps volunteering, which is something that sometimes Sauterton connects and other towns have a problem with volunteer. So we are looking to do something with them. So that might be a nice collaboration. And maybe other companies would say, and we could have somebody host, you know, sponsor basically an event. So other than that, with Third Friday, I'm just plugging away on all that and I'll have more next month. Thank you.
Thanks, Scotty.
I also want to take another detour. Annie, do you have anything from the library respective tonight?
Uh, nothing, but maybe I'll prepare to make your head.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, then, there's no other correspondence. I'll close that and open up for news day reports by the mayor for.
You, uh, a little quickly, first of all, we have a major citizen member of the audience tonight, Tristan Tonya. It's here from the Sauterton Arrowhead, the high school newspaper. So everybody, be careful. Uh. Oh, yeah, seriously, when you're here. Um. This Wednesday is uh an event at the Broad Theater that I'm hosting. It's uh screening of the nineteen eighty seven film Snorish in Time. It's free, it's no agenda, it's free money for anything or whatever. It's just a movie that I came across that uh I think black people probably had forgotten about, even if they've lived here forever. Uh, so I put it up thinking nobody, thinking we couldn't fill one theater and it's about ten hours, Broad Theater opened a second screening. So it is sold out, but if you could try, it's showing at seven and eight o'clock.
The DVD is also available to library.
Available this week because I have an out for this. So. It's cool to see on the big screen. John Ruth, who did the film, who's like the foremost historian of the area, is like ninety-five years old now. There for the screen, so that's pretty cool. Um, so I'm excited about that. And the last thing is that the concert Sunday's lineup was announced this month, so I'll fly through it real quick. It's running the concert, there are ten shows running June second through August fourth, starting with the Community Night, and then we have Die to Go, Akogo, which is New Orleans Rhythm and Blues, Eighties Revolution, which is a nineteen eighty party band, A Y Three Band, which is a Latin band, we're calling that Latin, the first time. All Worn Out, which is classic rock downtown band, has been at concert Sundays since the very first season. It's America's oldest concert band. Reservoir Hill is country rock. The Travis Wilted Trio is Blue Grannis. Best Shop is a Pat Benatar tribute, and Robert Eric's Piano Man is a Billy Joel tribute film. Uh, it's an exciting lineup, and we're looking forward to it. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Chief, good evening. Uh, the council should be receiving my report, but for the audience, real quick.
February hundred eighteen traffic stops, forty-two citations issued, ten crashes, luckily only one injury. Four arrests, one hundred fifty public service calls, sixty-nine other agents, and two hundred and ninety other calls for six hundred and forty-five calls, which is pointing for a day to a date. There represents a nine percent decrease over the time last year. Um, our arrests are down, which is a good thing. Our part one, which are more serious crimes, are significantly down. However, our part two, which are more minor crimes, unfortunately, uh, are up by about twenty-five percent. Um, I'll get to that momentarily. Uh, we're still continuing now almost on a daily basis to get crowd reports from borough residents, uh, and we're just, I don't know how to simply put it, but if you don't know somebody, just don't send them one, period.
Yeah.
Uh, or if it's not a major organization, it's the only way to defend yourself. Um, we're actually done today already. Uh, the other just been keeping us busy is that about two weeks ago, we were notified that um when the middle school gets out, the kids were hurting into a while on causing quite a problem. Uh, so since then, we have made one, we obtained one subject, he's been uh for now a while, and I'll run back. And since then, we've had a presence there Monday through Friday, every day, three to three thirty. Sometimes in uniform, sometimes not. Um, but we haven't had any issues since we've been there, including today. Uh, so that's now under control. And we're going to continue to be a presence there as the crowd, the crowds have greatly diminished from what they were, uh, so that the point's been made. Uh, our station renovations are done. Um, you know, if you need to work is the bathrooms, that can wait. Um, Officer Myheart spent a week in store, he's now a certified field training officer. So when we do hire new personnel, we now have four training officers to properly educate them, which is good. Our new police candidate did in fact pass her psychological test, so that's a good thing. Uh, the next two steps of the process are at the end of March, to which point then I can start with the captain. So do a good on that. Montgomery County Police Consortium is giving.
Quick question on that. Is there any, uh, that she potentially not uh have a slot if you haven't reserved a slot?
Yeah, we're good.
You're, you got it.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Um, we're giving another police test April twenty seventh. Uh, this year, they're actually changing up a bit to have the physical agility and the written the same day. Um, unfortunately, they're not, our test is the same day as Bucks County's. They're not expecting to get a whole lot of people to come out, but there are eighteen departments looking to hire all this next list. So it's not just us, it's, it is in fact a crisis in Pennsylvania. Um. I started including the dollar amounts that were being reported that was from district court that we collected fines and costs. We're up to a little over twenty-six hundred dollars this year. Uh, we continue to get money from bus patrol from people paying their fines. However, the bus patrol system is still out of service pending the legislation going into effect, which should be next week, I think. So I'll be able to start enforcing that again, if I understand it right. Uh, I'll get to the grant applications under your business. Um. Get your vehicles under your business. Uh, and for council and for the public, um, what the police department is actually trying to do is we set goals. Uh, and we want the goal to come from all of our stakeholders, which is the council members, the police, and you. And so if anybody has ideas on what you want to see your police form to retire to accomplish, please don't hesitate to contact us or anything that's reasonable. In fact, something that aren't reasonable, we'll look at, see what we can do uh to accommodate as best we can, make the community as safe as we can. And I believe that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, thank you, sir. And now Public Works Director, I P.
Hi, Council. So I do have a report that should have been in the phone and playing for our allegations that are February in the work. You're like presses a map, I can answer this, but there are a few topics that are happening this year. All right, so Stacy and I did meet with the best guy today at the pool. So it looks like people will be starting that project uh near the end of the month, but you're probably starting during that little week of the twenty. Next. Work session, the net one. I think we can come to even have a twenty-four, or around.
Party, right.
Yeah, equal person like that. I don't want to have it sitting too long, but never, we're gonna teach them the thought. Uh, we're down to just have to do the last three serum hours on Wild Avenue. Maybe soon as weather cooperates, you want to do it this week, it's not looking too bad. Or we'll be able to pull some on perfect. For now. Um, we have a meeting on Friday with the basketball coating people. Good that uh concrete slab out there. So uh, I'm gonna get some info and we'll find out some info for the work session. Uh, pricing, how I'm gonna do it, how I'm gonna pay it, and the color code. Usually they do the outside of port one color and then inside of port a different color than the foul area, the same color as the outside, so we'll have some samples on some color schemes. Figure out how to do that festival for.
I think it's getting a lot of use already, even in its current raw.
Yeah, the concrete guys put the basketball nets in wrong. I'm like, how did they all rip it? They're all hanging like. So they didn't do the extra loop around the back, so the nets were still good that came with that stuff. So. The, the coating guy is probably gonna use hard forces to put it down. If I did a system, well, we'll get into it there, but we buy a system, and the cheapest way is to have a crew put it down. It's like three hours a day for three days for each color. And then finish it over straight on the third day. So we'll talk about that session.
And no issues, chief, with the basketball court. I missed a couple shots today with her.
That's all I had.
Any questions for Mr. Cole? All right, thank you.
And the tour. Yes, uh, thank you. Um, I have submitted my uh solicitor's report, uh, just a few matters I'd like to touch on. The first matter, I'd like to talk to the council executive session about it, the property located at five thirty-nine Valley Lane. I do have a server out there to that. Uh, and number two is uh the left panel that should be before the council. Uh, there's actually a planning commission meeting on Wednesday as we and that will be reviewed by the planning commission. So uh council should be seeing that sometime in the spring. It's where the property located at six fifty East Broad Street. There's basically uh two buildings being constructed on the site, knocking the existing building down. Uh, each building will be about four thousand square feet, uh mostly residential, some, a little bit of commercial. Uh, and then the remainder of the report, I have been drafting, working on various updates. The ordinance is uh the thorough, um, international property maintenance code, construction components, updates. Also, the animal control ordinance is being updated and uh basically a dead tree ordinance as well is going to be updated. That is my report. Are there any questions, concerns?
No, thank you for that.
Any questions for God? Thanks for that excellent update and uh progression on all of these things. It's coming, compass and furious now. We got a lot of policies and ordinance things put, put up and and we'll put them somewhere. Last but not least, Stacy, then Borough Manager.
So um, just to let everyone know, it was on social media, but we are, full membership has opened and are online. So everyone can register for full membership starting today. And Christine's been really helpful in getting that online and getting us up and running. So um, it's really exciting to have that up. And uh, and the other thing we're working on is Public Works is working on renovating some of the event space. So we'll have some probably, a lot of people have asked about running that space, and we will have information about that probably shortly, once we talk apart about that. But so we're moving forward on things on that.
Okay, save the rest for business?
Yes.
All right, very well, then uh we'll go to committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
Yeah, uh, public safety. Um, we met um the first time in a little bit, and um we actually wound up establishing a monthly meeting. Um, and uh, much like the ordinance is, there's a lot of signage and things like that that need to be updated, so we'll be uh um, looking through those over the next uh few months, and we discussed uh obviously the police car uh.
Any others? Come on. Nothing.
The finance, the finance, the finance. About two weeks ago, yes, finance committee.
Um. We talked about a lot, so we're gonna be very busy. It's all, all I can report for now. Good meeting.
Okay, the public outreach committee met. And we're gonna continue our table on Third Friday, and we're gonna be in the same lovely spot we're always at, top of the hill. And also, we're thinking about another avenue where uh people can come and talk to the Borough Council. Uh, we did have it here on Saturdays, but we weren't getting uh too much response from that. So we're thinking about a more friendly kind of place, maybe where people will come out.
Dance hush.
Yeah. It's me with the mayor instead of me with the public. Well, and we'll get back to you with that. Other than that, that's all we have for public outreach.
All right, we look forward to that. Okay, thanks, Donna. Anyone else? Okay, then, that's it. Committee reports are in my favor. Time of the evening, I will not open up for public comment. If you are a borough resident or a property owner, we'd love to hear from, come to the voting, state name and address, and uh let us know what you'd like to share. How you doing?
My name is Mark Cabranich, and I own the property at five sixty-nine East Broad Street. Um, they also have a business located in their optical gallery, been there for twenty years in January, so. Um, I have an issue with my neighbor, which I've been in contact with Steve Toy uh regarding overgrowth and just not looking very well. It's a small section. There's a lot that's on the corner of School Lane and Broad Street, okay? And he's not sure who owns that property in between. The lawn gets cut, but there were dying trees and tree limbs would fall down, and then the weeds would grow further up towards the, the street. And uh I've been cutting that stuff back myself. I know there's been about two or three owners of that property. So it's getting to a point where I've just uh tired of doing it myself. And then this past summer, the overgrowth is growing over into my property. And um, there were two dead trees there. They did cut those trees down a few months ago to about ten feet. I don't know why they didn't cut them all the way down, but uh I haven't, uh, I did send Steve an email with some pictures and stuff like that, but I haven't heard back from him, so I just wanted to kind of reiterate with, with some newer people here and so forth that uh he indicated to me wasn't sure who owned that property next door. Wasn't necessarily the lot that's on the corner there, might be the, the townhomes that are that are right next to me, so. Just want to kind of make sure now that uh we're gonna be heading into the spring and summer, where everything's gonna be growing back, that we can get that to look nice and clean. So um, just wanted to put that on the record. And see, uh, you know, who do I contact from here on out? Is it Steve? Do I need to, should I still be contacting him, or you know, is there anybody, anyone else that I could be directly in contact with so we can?
She's taking time down. She's a Borough Manager.
Okay.
And you can.
You can forward that email to me. Um, so uh my email's on the website, but it's uh Stacy at Sautertonborough dot org. And without me, just Stacy, and then I'll, I'll follow up and figure out what's going on.
Perfect.
I try to get you an answer.
That's great.
The answer is certainly not. The Borough does not know that property.
We can find that out.
I would think so. You know, I look it up and I can see the property lines, but you know, it's just, you know, it is an entrance in its way to Sauterton on that side. You're driving down in, you know, you see that lot and you know, it just does, the overgrowth does not look good, doesn't look, look good on my business and property. Um. There's also a clothing and shoe drop box there. That's a big white box, which I think could be put a little bit further back as well. I don't think that's very nice looking as well. You know, just want to keep everything good looking going into Sauterton, so. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Anyone?
My name is Brad Nestor. Um, Barbara and I have moved into three twenty-eight North School Lane over forty-five years ago, and um we have a continuing uh issue with storm drainage on School Lane there uh the top of the hill. That's right across the street from the Telford Summit Street Park. And um, we were wondering, who do we talk to about getting some storm, storm drains at the curb in the street? I made two calls to the off, the Borough Office um next week, because there was someone out marking the curb in front of the hole. It's a blue and the green aerosols, like there is going to be some excavation down there. And I called the Borough Office, and nobody seemed to know why they were marking it. And I mean, my thought was if we're gonna be doing some, some kind of digging there, they could put some curb on drains in there at the same time, if that's possible. Who can I talk to about getting it done?
Registering the screen, I do get panicked. You know. An email did come in for someone looking for a small grain chat up there.
Okay.
So that part of the road is maintained by Telford, and they're getting ready to do a new project project on that for the summer, so we'll, we'll be out there to go.
The unusual thing is the, the, the curb marking is just in front of my property, the Huntsburgers and that, and that.
It might be a toll from Africa.
There is a toll there.
I see that call.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
And the Fourth Street several years back, they put drains, my, my property goes back to the Fourth Street properties, and just directly behind my home on Fifth Street, they have added curbs in the last ten years. Curb drains, excuse me, curb drains. And I would like to have the same curb drains put in front of my property because we're, we're top of the hill there, even though it's top of the hill, the water does collect there. And in the wintertime, what happens is when, when Telford comes out of some avenues, get their snowplow, all of their snow goes on my sidewalk. And I gotta shovel it off, and then, then we ended up with, with a nice sculpture out there that's going out into school. I don't feel responsible for just coming out of my property.
Three twenty.
Three twenty, three twenty.
Who else just called about water assurance or something? I just got the other one today.
Okay, okay. So do I talk to you or Stacy? Who do I?
Okay. Call the Borough Office first.
What did I?
Don't have an answer.
Email was, the email came from, from, they were, it came from the staff to send to you, so for you to give them a call back.
Oh, okay. Okay. She.
He was on vacation last week, so he won't.
That's true. Thanks, Mr. Nester. Anyone else?
Hey, uh, Jennifer Revolo from the Sauterton Charter School Collaborative. I just wanted to come out to thank everyone. We uh have an annual Race for Education, and someone got us a wonderful donation to the Sauterton School. Cool for the summer, and that's gonna be a great motivator for our kids. So I have a thank you note. Um, Stacy, should I hand it to you?
I'll pay.
Okay, uh, appreciate it. I'm not sure exactly who um is responsible for it, but um I know this is always the big um, the big prize at the end, so I just wanted to bring a thank you note.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone? Going once, going twice. All right, that closes the public comment period. And we'll move forward to business of the evening. Spencer?
Um, so I'm gonna turn this right over to Richie. Um, he had a memo in your packet, and that he'll go and we'll be having a big party for me.
Chief. Good evening. Included in your packet are, are couple pieces of information, so some, try to summarize it quickly. Uh, as you know, we practically, of course. Um, and they are difficult to maintain, and we've been given an awful lot. It's not the miles, it's cars actually, and hours, it was. So to combat, to combat rising costs into the budget that I've built since I've been here, I've given twenty-five thousand dollars a year for new vehicle purchase. Um, I mistakenly thought that that money was considered capital rolled over, and I was, I was corrected. So the twenty-five thousand dollars that we had last year, which I did spend a thousand of to get the day our car, uh, the twenty, we ended up giving back to the borough twenty-four thousand dollars, which went back to general funds. However, I was budgeted twenty-five for this year, so that's where we stand on the fine. We need to replace one of our vehicles, uh, or actually add as well. Um, because everybody said our vehicles idle an awful lot, and every hour in the car, I will speed thirty miles. So the gold police plate you can see out there right now is a little over theoretically six hundred thousand miles on it. Um, and we maintain them well. In fact, we maintain them so well, uh, I've already spent fifty-five percent of my maintenance budget this year as of today uh, on preventive maintenance, and because we've got a couple issues with vehicles. So because those costs are going up, and because of the budget, and I'm looking to purchase a new, uh, police vehicle, a new Ford Explorer, so twenty-twenty-three, however, is new. Um, Koch dealership, uh, is a Co-Stars vendor, which is the only way we buy things. And they quoted us a police package in thirty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars, after twenty-twenty-three. Not equipped, but the police package. A comparable twenty-twenty-four is currently listed for forty-six nine. So getting this twenty-twenty-three is automatically savings eighty-four hundred dollars. Um, to upfit the cost of the vehicles, about fourteen thousand more dollars for total cost of the vehicle uh, for purchasing to upfit it, it's fifty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four. And we remember that number, you can come back to that. So I'm looking for permission to purchase, um, this vehicle from Koch, and then have it upfitted for that quoted price of fifty-two thousand five thirty-four. Uh, between the money from last year and the money from this year, uh, there's a three thousand dollar gap, but that would be covered by my minor equipment budget, which is meant to buy things for police cars anyway, so that would cover the, the rest of the costs we install with the emergency equipment. Uh, that would give us a new vehicle in the police. It's gonna be all black, uh, ghost letter, pretty much black lettering, so it'll be seen at night, a little more than a dozen during the day. Uh, but it'll be used for normal patrol. Since we're gonna be adding two more officers, these vehicles are gonna be getting used an awful lot, and if a car runs in the run, there's no kind of die. Most people don't have a key, as we do, but it looks that we maintain them well. So the first thing I'm looking to do is getting the permission to purchase this new vehicle, which is on hold for us. Uh, we did not sign any contracts, we have made no promises to anybody. But Koch thirty-three has been kind enough to hold one aside for us until the end of March. Uh, this was explained to the Public Safety Committee, uh, what works here, guys, now.
Yeah, we were, I would say that we met, we discussed it, uh, we appreciate the, the planning that, that was, that went into it, um, understand that we did our budgeting a little differently, um, but I would say that ultimately, looking at the hours and the vehicles, you know, we, we landed in support of, of, of this movement.
That's right.
Didn't we discuss that this is gonna go back to work session again? We were waiting for more information regarding last year's, um, expenditures on each vehicle, and I'm also wondering why we are halfway through our.
We've had a lot of major equipment faults this year.
Like what?
Well, the, the trouble is we need a lot of work. This morning, we had an axle go on one of the vehicles, that's a thousand dollars right there. Um, there, it's just from them running. It's, it's for police cars, it's, it's normal, for the amount of hours and time that we put on them. But to hit, to get hit this much with this fast, uh, is admittedly unusual, but some of that cost is also our preventive maintenance that we're doing. Uh, we also end up buying a lot of tires. I feel good for them, so it, it's been rather unusual. I, 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 we've never spent this much just quickly, but again, a lot of it is for the future.
Ed, I agree. I mean, I'm fine with this purchase based on the Public Safety Committee's recommendation, but I agree. I thought that the two conditions were originally, that we were gonna talk about it further and see what we got on municipal bid for the sale prior to getting the vehicle.
Yeah, yeah, that was the discussion.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll continue, uh, 'cause I was gonna focus this on this. The second, um, purchase we'd like to make is of a used police car. Right now, we have two administrative police cars and the day our car that sits out there. Uh, the day our car didn't get used a lot, and it's starting to cost us a little bit. Our detective currently drives a Trailblazer, uh, and the reason we have a completely unmarked civilian vehicle is that if we have to transport civilians or victims, crimes, or witnesses, we don't want them in the back of the police car, it's just not where they're supposed to be. The officers also use it to go to training, uh, we use it to go to, to transport other things, and if we're doing any observation, we'll, we'll know where they are together. We purchased that vehicle for a little over four thousand dollars from Hatfield Township, um, from the sale of two other vehicles that we had, and we just did that, covered that cost two years ago. Uh, so that didn't cost us anything. What I'm looking to do this year is to sell the Trailblazer, which, which we just allowed money into to get to pass inspection, uh, won't pass inspection again, but right now it's in completely legal. And to sell the Derek vehicle. Um, both are currently listed on municipal bid. The vehicle that we're looking to buy is a used twenty-fourteen Dodge Charger from Tellmanson Township. It has only ever been an administrative vehicle. It's ten years old, but only has thirty-six thousand miles on it. Took it to coach, they gave it a once-over, they were very impressed with it. Um, it's gonna come with all the license irons in it, and they're looking to part with it for five thousand dollars. Included in your package is a comparable vehicle from a dealership that has eighty-five thousand miles on it, and they want sixteen thousand for it. And the reason I'm telling you about the five thousand number is, right now, with two vehicles lost from municipal, currently, we have four thousand dollars in bids. And municipal site is gonna be up until March twenty-sixth, so I'm anticipating those going up, so we will have more than, we will make money on selling these two a, a, above what the cost of Tellmanson vehicle is going to be. That will replace the, uh, one or two things will happen. It'll either replace the green car that won't pass inspection, or I will use it as my admin patrol vehicle and the SUV that I currently use with our detectives. So that one is gonna be a wash. I will actually down one vehicle, uh, which will save us money in the long term. Uh, so that's what municipal might be aiming for, and anything above and beyond that, which I'm very sure we're going to get, can be put back for the cost of the other vehicle.
Was that one also discussed at the public safety?
Yep. All of this was, yeah.
Why are they getting rid of the vehicle?
They have a normal, uh, replacement schedule. It was an admin vehicle, they came from for ten years, it was operated by their lieutenant, only to go to and from work. That's all he literally did with it. It's, it's pristine. I'm not a Dodge champ, but it's pristine.
I, I, same, same thing.
I'm fine with it. I just am pointing out that's not what was, not what we talked about, which is fine.
On the product, like, then, well, we. All of it, I may have forgotten about the maintenance. I, I did include in make sure I'm not lying. Oh, you know what? I brought it to public safety, which means I probably didn't give it to the rest of you. I do have the breakdowns for the, for the cost of vehicle repairs. Uh, my apologies if I'm not seconded up, I only gave public safety. Uh, but I do have that for you. Uh, for all last year and for this year to date, uh, what we've done, so I can't get that to you.
Uh, one last question. When are we gonna lose the? When did we lose that vehicle? How, how long would they hold?
Tellmanson?
No, for the new vehicle first.
How late till the end of the month?
How about Tellmanson then?
There, they have to take their radio's and equipment out of it, so at least two weeks, at least, we're good.
Yeah, um. I don't remember. Public Safety, make a motion.
Yeah.
In their packet.
Yes, yep. So, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of the twenty-twenty-three Ford Explorer through Co-Stars in the amount of fifty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars, which includes the outfit of the vehicle and the purchase of the twenty-fourteen Dodge Charger police vehicle for five thousand dollars from Tellmanson Township Police Department.
I'll second.
That's a great, I am motioning by councilors Monday and Wednesday, for the authorization of the twenty-twenty-three Ford Explorer through Co-Stars by, uh, fifty-two thousand five hundred eight, uh, thirty-four dollars, which would include the, and purchase also of the Dodge Charger police vehicle for five thousand by PTEPD, how mentioned. Um, is there any additional discussion, comments, concerns, debate?
My concern is we didn't, I mean, it, it went through public safety, but finance matters, or any of these numbers, or any of this information?
We met after. I, we met, but not.
And, and originally, we discussed doing this at our work session, because we had till the end of the month to make the decision. We were gonna authorize this at March work session.
We did, we had, I, I had the same assumption that we were going to get an idea of what we were gonna get on, uh, the vehicles for sale and what the maintenance deals were before we.
Chief, put it anywhere, why don't you, uh, why don't you do a, a summary of your expenses?
Sure. Uh, I'll give you this year's for the vehicles. Um, repairs this year so far, six thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. That includes the thousand dollars, as I told you, for the, the axle on one vehicle today. It includes a little over, about fourteen hundred dollars to get the Trailblazer, uh, up to snuff, so it would pass inspection. Um, we've had a couple, we've had to get tires, uh, we've had to replace a couple batteries. Uh, and none of this includes the, the damage from the crash that we had too. Um, a lot of it's routine maintenance, this is wipers, tires, oil changes, uh, some brakes, uh, we had a, another bad axle. Um, our prices also include, we get the vehicles washed on a regular basis, so some of that cost is also just a subversion or washes. Um, and we've had some electrical problems, not electrical problems. We recycle equipment in the police cars, so when we get a new one, we take equipment out of the old one and put it in the new one. That eventually failed, so we got a siren, s- speaker and some lights dying on car, that was a thousand dollar fix. But they already came from two previous generations, so we got our monies right out of them. So that's what takes us up to the sixty-five ninety-four for this year. Last year's repair budget was ten thousand dollars. Uh, we ended up spending ten thousand four hundred, so we were a little older last year, but again, that also included car washes, so they can take that out. So last year, we were right on par. This year has just been a rough year. Getting hit really hard early.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Chief. Um, any other questions, concerns? I, I will email those out too. All right, I'd like to take a vote in just a second, but we know that we have a fleet of vehicles that they, they not only accumulate miles, but they accumulate engine runtime, like Chief has educated us before. The veh, the vehicle that need to be replaced, uh, must be replaced. And at the same time, the analogy that we used is that everyone knows you have a roof on your house, and depending on what type of, uh, condition you have, the weather, all those things, you can anticipate that you're gonna need a replacement, and these vehicles, council did that. But, uh, Vice President and, uh, Council Hall have good points, and we know that the, the direction of movement is that we'd like to be more predictive, and if we need to, uh, allow time to understand what a replacement schedule might look like, not just for vehicles, but anything we do or, or maintain within the borough, that's the direction we're going. It can't happen overnight, as Stacy has continued to, to tell us. So at this point, I'll take a voice vote, and, uh, if I can't ascertain what that is, then I'll do a roll of the vote, but, okay. So all in vote, uh, favor of the motion to approve, uh, the purchase of both vehicles, both the Ford Explorer for fifty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars, as well as the Dodge Charger from Tellmanson for five thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, there we go. That's you now, Stacy. We'll move forward with that with caution for the next purchase of. All right. And Stacy, the last one, I guess?
Uh, no, I think you're also gonna discuss the grants, um, and then we'll.
Oh, yes, sorry, missed the note.
Yeah.
Pretty thorough, it's all. And then, then, onto some better news. Um, last March, uh, I reached out to Rosa Malagary's office, who offered us some assistance in getting a grant through DCED for equipment purchases. Um, we got a new governor, some other things happened. Unfortunately, we didn't get any grants last year. Uh, nothing was awarded to us. However, uh, the representative, they're rather persistent individual, uh, which is a good thing, and I was notified by his office last year that we have in fact been awarded the grant, uh, and started the paperwork. So, remember that fifty-two thousand we were gonna spend on vehicle? So through the grant, um, we are being awarded fifty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars to be put towards the purchase of equipment. That includes two sets of license plate readers for the police cars, that includes three new sets of computers, monitors, um, replacement equipment for our radios, which includes speaker mics and batteries. Um, there was one other thing. I can't find it. All right, more technology, uh, for the room. So, um, I started the paperwork last Friday, uh, we can only fill it out between nine and two on Fridays for the state site, so it's monitored. Uh, and unfortunately, well, maybe not looking at what I printed out for that I had put in for that fifty-two thousand dollars, however, they hacked it out for a hundred and five, so somebody's math is wrong. I'm not gonna say no if they give the hundred and five, uh, but I am gonna correct that. But through his diligence, we are now well on the way to getting that fifty-two thousand dollar grant that we did not get last year.
Right.
Okay, my representative. Uh, speaking with the borough manager, I also put in for another grant. Our new police cadet is gonna have to go to the academy, that's six thousand dollars. The grant we just put in for would pay five thousand of that. Uh, and the state has a little more than one point four mil, and for that, so we're anticipating getting that one. And I can't put in for it until December, but the Commonwealth will also pay fifty percent of a new recruit's salary. So if I can be put in for that and get that, that will cover half of her salary cost for us, so that's gonna save the borough, try to get it quite a bit of money. Uh, and I got two more grant educations today that I'm gonna be putting in for, the, the grant cycles are opening up rather rapidly. The reason we were denied many grants last year is because of our low crime rate. Uh, so, uh, a lot of the money went to your more, uh, went to Philly, to be honest. Uh, instead of coming here, however, there has been a change, and things are becoming more favorable towards us, so we're gonna put in for everything that we can get.
Shouldn't it? Okay, no action from us, right?
No, um, but Chief has been keeping me informed of all of the grants, and gives you how. All of them.
All right, thank you. Now that moment, that's it.
Okay, so, um, we have previously mentioned about, um, outsourcing some of the lowings that we do, uh, for the borough. It just frees up the public work department and doing other things. So we wanted to put out a bid, uh, for to see what the cost would be to come in, uh, and, and do this. We are gonna keep some of these, the ones that were involved and wonderful, so keep them for now. Um, and, um, so we wanted to put it on, have it, see what the cost comes in, see if it's worth it, um, and if it is, and the cost comes in well, it's gonna open up some more time for the, for the staff to do some of the other stuff that we need to get back, so. Uh, this, uh, Steve, you know, we lived, um, and we, I worked with, you know, the department on, on getting them to, that's something they like as well, so. But, and I worked with the Department of Operation to, uh, to put in the bid, the hundred bid. Um, the reason I wanted this, put it on this meeting, is to make sure we get it, hopefully, we could order it by the equal meeting, so we'll be in time to be, uh, on the theater, so.
Steve, is there a line with it?
Yeah, we, we worked on this for a couple weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Beginning here.
Okay, there. Yeah, this is really, uh, aggressive compared to what we're used to, so it's not gonna harm us if you need uh, we must publicly, uh, vote and authorize for the bids. Uh, but this is a good example, instead of talking about it for three months, I mean, there.
We have people that have been calling, our, our landscape that we have in place now, our local set, have been getting lots of calls, and people waiting to see it come out, so. Really curious to see what the, the judgment be.
Yeah, this is good, this is good, uh, this is good, do this now and not wait for a work session, and then you can have your, your information sooner, so.
If, if it doesn't work out, we should go and ask some other people that would come and help with it.
So this would eliminate some, or, or at least in that capacity?
Yeah, yeah, the, the lots that we have left, some of them will disappear with some projects that we're going to be doing. Like one sixty-one, other projects, so, properties. So we, what, what's on our list, we could easily mail on one. So we, what, what's on our list? We could easy mail on one of them.
And you compare it to when we get the bids in to what we spend hourly on uh, summer help? Or Saturday, whatever's going on? So I, we can see apples to apples.
Pretty much can. The, the main sheet with the park hours is mostly milling. That's on the color side of them. Well, you don't see much, well, right now, slowly, you see that number go up, but we keep up.
I mean, what if you hide some of the factual or or.
And we would keep ownership responsibility for like the non-bulls, for example, Boys and Girls Club and no, no conflict there.
Um. Yes, so um. Yeah, there's, there's no problem. We're just having them. We're just contracting. Um, it's just, I, I was just putting a little note so you understood. The agreements we had and thought about.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, that's the only reason why I complained, but we'll know next time.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion there?
Well, could I, I would just, why are we not keeping some of our? I mean, why are we knowing things that we should, I would even, I would think it should be the other way around, like. I would think we would want to do each one of the parks and. Like the main street collage and things like that, stuff that the public. Is more involved with. The, the other ones, I mean. If we contract and it doesn't get done. I mean, it's not a big deal. The Front Street vault, who was left there or.
Well, if we're contracted, it would only better get it done.
Or you can say that, but if it doesn't get done, I mean, it's not.
Your common are already doing parks also. Okay, so that's what you should do with parks.
For us or for?
Probably for ours.
For ours.
And Doylestown, all of our parks were moved by contractor.
I, I mean, no with our guys, and we had our guys, it was done and everything was good. I'm just concerned with. And contracting some of that out, maybe.
We, we can't keep both. You know, and that's the one thing.
Yeah, I know. I, I would almost like to see some of the important ones done by us still, but. Is it going to be a long some bid or is it going to be broken out?
Not long some bid.
They have the, the bigger bellers to evolve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see your point, Ed. Um, but yet we know a lot of it's been done by. Public Works and or what we've been outsourcing. Will flexibility, like will there be options built into the bid to? Or is it just flat out, these are the properties and whatever that bid is?
Were these going to be the, we came up with when we worked with public works, the ones that are, that are, you know, taking up a lot of time to do? And, and that's, this is why these were picked.
Yeah, so we, we could see the bid and, and then discuss it further. At, at, at a work session. All right, then let me have a motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. President, I make a motion to authorize the advertising for bids to be placed on Penn bid for the borough mowing contract.
I thought that was going to be viewed as, all right. All right, I have motion by Council Riders and Littlefield uh, for authorization of and advertising for bids to be placed on Penn bid and for the borough mode and time tracks added outline by Stacy. Are there any other questions or concerns? All right, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. And. Stacy, is there any other business before I? Move on to the. You have another?
No, I have nothing else.
Oh, you have nothing else. Okay, very good. Then for the public. Uh. We necessarily have to go to executive session to discuss personnel and confidential privileged information. Uh, council will leave momentarily to go back to the rear conference room. I will always keep this meeting open and we will adjourn this meeting. Uh, with no intention for council to return back to council chambers, so. Uh, no need to, free to wait here and uh. We'll take a brief recess, council, and since I'm being in the conference room. When that meeting, executive session meeting is over, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate it.
Thank you.